Special meeting February 12, 2018 at 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kusumoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
All righty, I'll start with special orders of the day. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We have tonight a workshop that we are doing, and I'll give an introduction and I'll hand it over to Mike Wong, who's the principal on the study and studies that have been done. The city has been contemplating the future of our civic facilities for many years, and based on previous direction from the City Council and a needs assessment ad hoc committee that the council had appointed, the city entered into agreements with Jones, Lang, and LaSalle to do three different studies. The first study is the highest and best use study that was, the principal is here tonight, Mike Wong from JLL. He is Senior Associate of JLL Institutions. He was in charge of preparing and coordinating the original study, and that then was submitted to that ad hoc subcommittee, and the results of the study and recommendations came forward with the City Council from that point. From that initial study, there were two additional studies that were recommended by the ad hoc committee, and I should mention the ad hoc committee was Councilmember Warren Kusumoto, and we had our previous Councilmember Josh Wilson that were on that ad hoc committee. The two recommendations, the recommendations for the two additional studies was the hotel feasibility study. Kent Michaels is here from JLL to present the summary results of that, and we had an additional property condition assessment analysis that was done by Ricardo Flores, also from JLL, and he will present the summary results of that report. So what we're seeking is feedback and get the dialogue going and possible direction back to the city staff on the future of our civic center needs, and we're kind of at a fork in the road at this point in time, whether we stay onsite and through the property condition assessment analysis, we've identified needs that have to be done if we stay onsite, or do we come up with creative alternatives like a private public partnership or other options that may be out there and identify financing to go down that path. So that's really what we're seeking at this point, to simplify where we are and the road that we've taken, and with that, I will introduce Mike Wong, and he will kick it off, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Carlos, for letting us present our findings for today, this evening. So as a background again, we were hired to do a highest and best use study. Please, Mike, please. Determine what the highest and best use is of the facility, whether there are enough revenues to offset any cost of development of a new civic center, order costs to rehab. We had others besides ourselves. We also had an architect do a quick summary of what your space needs would be, and when then, as part of our approach, we looked at the highest and best use of what the uses would be to generate the most revenues possible on any excess land that was available. We looked at three scenarios. One was to rebuild all the city functions on the original site, and based on the expected space need, there would be about one acre site available to dispose of as for excess land. The other one would be to only build the essential services, the police department and the park and recs on the site and rest of civic space, administration space, to be leased offsite within city limits. The third was exactly the same as number two, but said leasing space if you were able to acquire property. And so those are the three scenarios we ran through, and then from the excess land, we determined that the highest investors that generated the most offsetting revenues to help offset costs would be the hotel project. On the next page, and it's just the overview of your site, you see what you have in terms of existing building square footage. We took a look at what the needs were for the new space. We applied a 10% factor, so from $49,000 to $32,000, where your storage would be offsite anyway on a separate industrial property, hopefully, and keeping parking at about the 100 spaces that you have now. And this is based on the site planning that what you have is 3.1 acres. If you were to rebuild onsite, scenario one, the 32,000 square feet, leaving you based with the plaza, storage, keeping everything onsite, you would have an excess land of about $43,000 or about the one acre. If you were only to build just the park and rec and the police, then the 32,000 would be down to 20,000, and you would have about two acres for disposition to generate additional revenues. Same for scenario three, you would still have the same amount, 2.3 acres to work with in terms of disposition of that site for additional revenue generation. Any questions so far?
Did you guys talk at all with the Rossmore-Las Alameda Sanitary District, or has staff talked to them, since that's a major chunk right in the middle of all this?
We talked to them early on in the process, and there was really no movement whatsoever in their interest to sell. Josh Wilson thought he was making some headway, but there's been really no headway to make right now.
Do we think, I guess as a council, do we think that at some point we should start some sort of formal discussions, other than people seeing people in a park and talking about it, where we would actually see what their interest in, because I think the business case starts to have some challenges with a big hole right in the middle of it. So it would be, I think it'd be helpful, because I know I don't have any idea of where they would even be, and I would think if I was on that board, I would be thinking it was really interesting to hear all this happening, and nobody's reached out to me.
Lincoln Properties have reached out to them several times as well, and attended their meetings to try to get, to go around staff to get to the board members, but no interest.
Okay, cool.
Then we looked at what the development cost and the net cost options would be for those three scenarios. So you can see for scenario one, if you were to rebuild just your entire facilities onsite, it would be roughly about $16 million selling off the one acre parcel, and then the fiscal benefits from TOT, property tax, any sales tax, offsetting the $15 million, then you would have approximately a $12 million net cost if you were just to build and dispose of the one acre excess land parcel. Scenario two would be we're just to build just the police and the park and rec, it would be approximately eight million, and the lease cost on a net present value basis, we assumed would be about $5 million, with the larger land parcel and the larger fiscal benefits being generated, this would drop the net cost down to approximately $5 million. The other scenario, we looked at if you were able to acquire existing facilities, office space, light industrial flex space, your cost would be about $12 million, and then offset by the same land value and fiscal benefits, it would drop it down to about three and a half million, and that was our first step, and that's what we think would be your lowest cost options if, and it's all dependent on having the space available to either buy or lease, and that's very dependent on what the market's availability is at this time.
Does anybody on the council, we've always stayed at the high level, does anybody have any questions? Because this really is the story right here. Go ahead, Rich, and then we'll cover it up.
On the scenario number one, do you have a map of how the acreage is being used? What's available, what's being used?
Right now, yeah, if we went back to the, there.
No, I'm sorry, I said that incorrectly. A proposed map of what the new scenario one would be?
No, we didn't do an actual architectural drawing. We just assumed, what we assumed in our site calculation would be that the fire would be in its own separate building, because they have very specific, it has to be not wood, it has to be steel framed, it has special safety requirements that's built in, so they reduce the cost. We had that as one separate facility. The city administration staff would be in a building which would be like the lower cost type five wood frame structure, so we would have two separate buildings plus another one for your maintenance department. So we didn't like place where the best placement would be, we just took the, what we thought would be the existing square footages and placed, and said this is how much the footprints would be on the planning, but not to actually place, do a drawing, no, we can do that at that level.
At one point, we, Brett, we had talked about like a four, a four-story building. Was that considered at all?
We did that in our first phase, but since your, your fire and your police department is also within the same building, the cost for the whole facility would be.
Just police?
Just the police, I'm sorry, would be all part of the same cost. You can't build one steel frame and put it, the second part, the whole building would be up to the safety standards of the police department. So that's why we took away the four-story, because they created more land, but then the cost just ate up all the potential land revenue you would have unless you separate out those two uses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Kusumoto.
If you can go back two slides, Stephen. So this is the thing that was a surprise to me, right there. So you look at the city yard, I mean, the square footage of what we really need is like one-fourth of what we have, so there's kind of the real story there, too. We have this excess land that's not being put to use, so be mindful of that. Thank you.
Shelley.
Did you ever take into account, because I remember reading before, there's really nothing to lease here. If we want to lease, we would have to go to another city.
Well, yeah, we looked at what was available. There wasn't a whole lot at this time, and we assumed that you wouldn't lease off the city, so we don't know. It depends on the market, if there's space available. There's like an industrial park that you can take flex space, you can make that into office space. It takes a more in-depth search what's available, what's coming up for lease, but we just said, we assumed that you can find space, but we didn't do an in-depth study to see what's available, what's coming up.
I think that's a trickier option than just saying scenario number two looks great, because there really isn't any place compatible in our city to lease. So it's a great scenario, but reality is.
There might not be the space available.
Or even purchase, I mean, in our city.
No, and that's, yeah, we contemplated that, you know, you have to find a space that comes up at the right time, you know, we also thought, you know, you might be able to take flex space, industrial space, doesn't have to be pure office, because we know that's a very limited market, so it was based on those types of assumptions.
And did you look at an option of moving departments onto already city-owned property? Like if we wanted to look at the option of moving Park and Rec over to the back of Little Cottonwood Park that we already own, was that, was that?
That was contemplated, we talked about all these types of options, and so of course, if you had that, you would just, but you still have to build it, and you still have to.
Right, but we don't have this, we don't have that scenario, because that's for the land, obviously, that's a new cost.
It's a new cost for development, but then you would create a site land here that you can dispose of and generate additional revenue.
Right, but that wasn't written down as a scenario at all?
No, not for right now, because we did have the specific sites identified.
But that would have been, in option three, because the recommendation is to purchase the land, and that's the one that the ad hoc committee honed in on, we talked about that possibility of moving on to Little Cottonwood to further drill down on possibly reducing that net cost or that gap.
Yeah, because we own the land.
Right.
So, okay.
Especially for the park and rec, it would be a natural.
Just as an option.
Mark, do you have any questions?
What is the size of Little Cottonwood?
Just. It's a little over six acres, I believe it's six acres.
And back in the very back, it's pretty much unused. I mean, it's very, very deep, and it's an option as far as you've got your park there or your biggest park, and that type of thing. It's another option of land we already own.
Right, and it just would, and it would have to be kept as park, but that could be argued that it is kept at park, especially if it's rec and park that's moving there, even if it's in trailers, and you're using maybe two-thirds of that park for facilities, and the rest of it is still available park space. And then that would, we'd go away from building a new rec facility here, and we'd move other facilities and build them here. That's what we were talking about, the possibility.
It would also solve a possible parking issue, because you're taking a lot of cars out of here that would normally go for the community services. Just an option.
So the question I have is, it's a little counterintuitive, when you look at the scenario two versus three, lease versus buy, the cost of lease acquisition is higher to lease than actually to buy, and you're buying something, so can you talk a little bit about why there is a difference? Because I kind of was wondering if you were assuming some sort of use of city-owned property there.
No, no, assuming that you acquired, found the space that's, you know, adequate size that you can lease, we, what we did was, we took, you know, like a typical lease, they would pay for your TI's some part, but you're gonna have to probably do something of your own. Then, like a 30-year lease with CPI inflation readjustments every 10 years from market, and then brought it back onto a net present value basis, versus where if you purchased, you didn't have to deal with those steady increases of, you know, lease CPI increases since you're the, essentially the owner, and that's where the difference was, you would save the cost of the inflation by owning the property.
So the MPV was calculated 30 years out and brought back to current year?
Yes.
And was, that was the same process you used on the purchase, too?
For purchase was that, you know, this is the cost to buy, we put in a cost to put in TI's to make it adequate for your, so we assume, I think, $25 per square foot for TI, that you would have to pay for or finance, but then, once it was financed, there was no additional cost for escalation purposes, for occupancy.
So the approximate budget we would have to buy a piece of property in 3.1 is how much?
3.1.
In total, so that's total, so there is no TI value built into that?
That included the TI, the 3.1.
So take off the TI value, how much approximately net value is there to buy property for, in the 3.1?
Well, that would just be the total cost of buying an existing building, so it would be like two points, I think there was a couple hundred thousand, I can't find the exact number, but about $2.7 million.
But if I go buy a piece of property today, and I pay 3.1 for it, and I, a piece of property, and then I do $9 million worth of development, right?
Yes.
I'm not gonna have TI's, because I'm gonna have it counted for in the development, correct? Or you're saying the TI's to get other people in that building?
No, to get you in the building, that for the 3.1, your city administration space, I'm assuming it could be part flex, office space, so, you know, we assume that there would be some cost for adjustments for you to make available for your space.
Okay, and then, to be commensurate, since the cost of lease acquisition is spread out over 30 years, that brought back in net present value, the cost of maintenance of buying a piece of property and maintaining it for some period of time isn't in this, so it's 3.1 pure, possibly understated.
It could be understated with the occupancy cost of maintenance.
Okay. Okay, and then while we're at the highest level, Mayor Protem Kusumoto, you were going through this, you guys selected scenario three, since Josh isn't here, can you give us a perspective of what you guys were considering?
Yeah, so I think on this one, because of just when you look at the bottom line cost, you know, what we were kind of thinking about is going to be high, and it was really surprising it was where it is, so I recall Josh got really excited about that, and that's kind of how we gravitated to this. Would you agree with that, Brett?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it was, the net cost was lower than what I thought, and it may in reality still be lower than, you know, if we go out into the marketplace, but I was surprised, I think, Steve, we were surprised at the staff level and ad hoc level that the net cost, you know, that there was an option out there that had that gap that was that low.
Yeah, so that's what we gravitated towards, that.
Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead, I don't have any other questions.
And on the next slide, then, we looked at the, your net cost if you were able to finance through a city bond, using the, the annual payment of the bond would be in terms of three scenarios, so 16, 10, $9 million bonds, your annual payments would be about 800, 700,000 or 594 per year, and taking a look at what the fiscal benefits are being generated, at what point would those benefits meet the bond payment? So in the first scenario, your annual payment would be 883,000, based on that little one acre development, they wouldn't generate, it will never catch up to your, within 30 years, what it would grow into to even help you offset your annual payment. Scenario two, it looks like about in year 25, the benefits generated from the onsite development of a hotel from property tax, TOT, it would be growing enough to about the 25th year. In scenario three, with the lower bond payment, it would be about in year 20, that if things progressed with the property tax, TOT escalating per CPI, it would be in year 20, then that could be a possibility. So we looked at the financing issue. And these are like, we can go into it now or later, Stephen, if you want to, but here's the potential next steps, and where do you want to go, whether the studies, do you want to go straight to, this is for further discussion.
Yeah, what we're interested, one of the equations we don't have in this is what does the market think of this opportunity? You know, public-private partnership, the P3, we don't understand the private side. Is the private side interested? You build a parking structure at Orange County Airport, and you know the private side comes out really quick with their interest, but we just don't know what the market conditions are, and they might be interested for us. So.
That's part of the equation, that we feel that we have a gap on.
Okay. With that, bring it back to the council.
You know, I've never been a fan of leasing. Richard and I were involved with the base when we were talking about moving over there, and the fact that we would never own that land.
You'll always be a tenant, yeah.
Right, always be a tenant, and a 30-year lease, so what happens in year 31, and we just sold off, sold off.
Yeah.
One of our biggest assets.
Yeah.
And we have zero control over it.
Yeah.
I'm just, you know, we're, we're pretty good about how is this gonna affect future councils, and this is a huge future council thing.
Yeah, you, you know, whether you can have that space again.
We are so real estate poor and land poor as a city, to sell off something, to go rent something makes, I wouldn't do it for my own home.
Sure.
I certainly am not in favor of doing it for the city, just because I think it just puts us non-sustainable, and that's what we're trying to do right now.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll second that. I don't really see scenario two as something, as a positive or a possibility, given what we know now, but just for the same reasons, Shelley.
But I guess I'll, I'll take a contrary view on the lease, I think. One of the things we're looking at is what is the deferred maintenance cost that we have to reinvest in this property? And then you gotta kind of look, going forward out in time, what is going to be the annual maintenance that we're gonna have to put out there? And so even though we own, it's still gonna cost, so what is that, you know, again, if you can rent and not tie up capital, which is what we're doing, right? We're tying up a resource. If we can rent something that, you know, it's, because again, owning something is gonna cost us year after year. We're gonna see that in one of the future, how many, how much deferred maintenance we have to go make up? And so that's gonna be, 30 years from now, it's gonna be the same thing, so if we're leasing and, and it's a break even, then it may make sense to lease. I mean, why own an asset that's appreciating, it's just tied up, it's a, it's a how many million dollar asset we're tying up? So how does, how do we put that to work for us, for the city? So it's a different view of things.
My question is, we're gonna have a couple more items presented to us, the hotel feasibility and the property condition assessment, so, you know, I think I'll wait until I have everything laid out, and then I definitely have a perspective, and I think I'll wait for that.
Okay, so then I'll pass the mic to Kent from our hospitality group.
Well, hi, everyone. Again, I'm Kent Michaels. I work in JLL Strategic Advisory Group. I'm based in Los Angeles, and we do hotel feasibility studies all over the nation. I manage our West Coast practice, and so we were, you know, we were retained by the city to conduct a market and feasibility study for a proposed select service hotel at the subject site here. We reviewed, you know, we reviewed the demand and supply characteristics of the market, we reviewed the performance of comparable hotels in the area, and with that information, we first projected the performance for a hotel on this piece of property, and then given that projected level of performance, we estimated a residual land value. That value would reflect the value that we think a hotel developer would pay for the portion of the land required for hotel development. We can move along to the, to the next slide. And I'm happy to kind of go, before I go any further, you know, I'm happy to go, I'm happy to go as in-depth as you would like. You know, we have a lot of slides on here that go into an overview of the market in Los Alamos and in the Los Angeles metropolitan area, and I know you all are probably very familiar with a lot of the demand drivers in your market, so I'll try to go through those relatively quickly and spend more time on the hotel projections and our methodology there, but by all means, if you want me to slow down or speed up, just, just let me Let's maybe, yes, go through, we can fast forward through the executive summary, and I'll, you know, we can start by, yeah, this is a great place, great place to start, actually. So one of the first, you know, one of the first steps in our process in evaluating the feasibility of new hotel development is to evaluate the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats associated with a particular hotel development site. I mean, here, this is a great location in that there are numerous demand generators reasonably close by. You have California State University, Long Beach Disneyland Resort, only nine miles away. Of course, you have the Los Alamos Racetrack a mile away. There's numerous corporate demand generators located, located along the avenue here, and you have long, in addition to that, there's really strong accessibility. Long Beach Municipal Airport, which services 2.9 million passengers a year, is only four miles away. Of course, you have a large network of other airports here in Los Angeles. We're very close to the 605, so all of these, you know, basically for a hotel to perform well, you want to have strong demand drivers, which we have in this market, and you want to have strong accessibility and strong visibility for the property. And I think that all those three criteria are met in this site here, so I would definitely see a market for hotel development here. You know, I mean, some of the, you know, some of the weaknesses and threats, quite frankly, are weaknesses and threats that we see, you know, for, for most hotel developments. There is, there is a lot of new supply coming to the broader Long Beach and Los Angeles metropolitan areas. That being said, in this particular submarket here in Los Alamos, there is not a lot of new supply coming online. You have the Fairfield Inn, which we would see as being competitive, but beyond that, there's really not a lot of upscale select service products planned in the immediate vicinity, so we don't see new supply, you know, new supply is always a threat. It can weigh on the broader market, but we don't see many direct competitors coming into the market here, you know, so, so, so that's, that's a great thing. Another thing that I would just highlight here, I mean, we do feasibility studies across, across the nation, and Los Angeles is one of the strongest markets in the United States. In, in 2016, actually, it recorded the highest rate of RevPAR growth among the top 25 largest lodging markets in the United States. In 2017, RevPAR growth, and RevPAR growth is sort of the primary indicator of hotel performance that we look at, and that stands for revenue per available room. That metric, you know, slowed to about an inflationary level in 2017, which is pretty consistent with what we've seen in most markets across the United States. Anyways, it's a great market, institutional hotel investors are very interested, and once you develop a hotel, there's very liquid bull of buyers. Move on to the next, to the next slide. Yeah, let's talk about the economy a little bit. You know, so obviously here, we're located within the Los Angeles Long Beach metropolitan area, you're talking about the second largest metropolitan area in the United States, second largest economy in the United States. Growth has been really strong in recent, in recent years. We've seen GDP growth, you know, about 3% to 3.5%, and that trajectory is expected to continue over the next several years. So when, looking at the economic backdrop here, it's definitely a positive story. So when looking at the economic backdrop here, it's definitely a positive story. You're all kind of familiar with many of the top employers in the area. I mean, just driving down the street here, you see, you know, so many name brands, Yamaha, Mitsubishi, United Healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, we definitely do see a strong corporate demand base for hotel development in the area. And that corporate demand is really important for your hotel performance during, during midweek periods when your leisure travelers aren't staying at hotels here in suburban areas to the same extent. I think we talked a bit about that already, so I think, and I think sort of skip through to the, to the meat here. Yeah, let's, let's stop here for a little bit. On this slide here, we just go through, you know, your, your local demand generators here in Los Alamitos. I mean, I think that the most important ones here are California State University, Long Beach. It's the third largest campus among the 23 school California State University system. It has 37,000 students. We see that as being a strong demand generator for hotels in this area. From a leisure perspective, you have Disneyland about nine miles away. Obviously, there are other hotels closer to Disneyland Resort. But during high demand periods, you could definitely see some overflow demand from that source as well. The Los Alamitos Racecourse is only a mile away. And the Joint Forces Training Base, we definitely considered, considered this demand generator in our analysis as well. It's the only military airfield in the Los Angeles area. You have 700 full-time personnel there. And additionally, it's a, you know, training facility for, for guardsmen. And on many weekends throughout the year, you'll have 3,000 guardsmen and reservists training at the facility. And they all need, you know, hotels to stay at. So, you know, we see the proposed hotel as accommodating some of that demand. Continue to move on here. Here again, I kind of highlighted some of this information a bit already, so I'll move through it relatively quickly. You know, here in Los Alamitos, we're really, we're right on the border of two major lodging markets. One being the Los Angeles lodging market and, and the second being the Anaheim lodging market. And as I stated earlier, Los Angeles has one of the strongest metropolitan lodging markets in the nation. Revenue per available room averaged growth of nearly 10% per year for six consecutive years between 2010 and 2016, before slowing to about an inflationary level in 2017. Move on to the next slide. This slide gives an overview of the lodging performance in the Anaheim metropolitan area market. And here again, we've seen really strong and consistent revenue per available room growth over, over the last seven years. Revenue per available room growth averaged about 8% between 2010 and 2016 in Anaheim. And again, more recently in 2017, that growth slowed to 3.4%, which is still, I would know this is still outpacing the national average, which was at 2.7% last year. Move on here. Here again, new supply. So what we've shown on this table is we evaluated, we subscribe to a service from Smith Travel Research. Basically, they compile a list of every hotel that's in the planning or construction phase throughout the United States. I think that there are about 10,000 hotels in, in those various stages of development in the United States. In this table here, we've summarized all of the hotel, all of the proposed new hotel projects that are being tracked for the Orange County Northwest sub-market, which is where Los Alamitos falls, according to Smith Travel Research's designation. So you can see that there are about a dozen hotels planned within this broader sub-market. But, you know, most of them are located in, in Long Beach and Buena Park. You only have one hotel planned in the immediate vicinity of Los Alamitos, and that would be the Fairfield Inn that we discussed. So that's projected to open in the summer of 2019. And we would see that as being competitive with a proposed hotel at this site. We can move on. Now let's talk about, you know, the type of hotel that we would envision as being most market feasible in this location. We've envisioned an upscale select service product. Now what exactly does that mean? So hotels that fall into the upscale select service designation would include your Courtyards by Marriott, Hilton Garden Inns, Hyatt Places, Residence Inns, some of the newer brands in this space, Aloft and Element. Basically, you know, they, these hotels cater to, they cater to corporate and leisure travelers. They tend to have a relatively limited amount of meeting space. Maybe you'll have, you know, between 1,500 and 3,000 square feet of meeting space at this type of hotel on average. And they tend to have pretty limited food and beverage operations as well. You know, maybe you'll have a grab and go outlet where you can get a coffee and a quick breakfast or something like that. They will typically have a bar where you can get a drink at the end of the day. But they do not have, they typically do not have a full-service restaurant that serves meals three times per day. And, you know, the reason, these, these hotels, quite frankly, are, they tend to be the most attractive to most hotel developers because they're fairly inexpensive to build and highly profitable to operate. You know, meeting space is a great amenity to have, but it's, it's, it tends to be very expensive to build. And a full-service restaurant that provides meals three times a day, again, it's a great amenity to have. But hotel-operated restaurants tend to be relatively expensive to build and not very profitable to run. So, you know, if you're, so if you're looking to maximize the value of the land underlying a new hotel development, in most cases, particularly in a more suburban market, you're going to want to pursue select service hotel development because they can afford, they can afford to spend the most, the most for the, for the land and still yield the profits that they need to pay for their cost of development. We've assumed 150 guest rooms in our analysis. Typically, your select service hotels will have, you know, between, between 80 rooms on the low side to, you know, maybe 180 rooms on the high side. Once you get to a higher guest room count than that, you really need to build that expensive meeting space in order to make the hotel, in order to, in order for the hotel to have access to the kind of occupancy that it needs to be successful. You know, and also, we're talking about a site here that's three, right, 3.1 acres in total. So frankly, you're probably not going to have a lot more room to build, build more guest rooms.
So Kent, I have a question. So along those kind of figures, 80 to 180, what kind of, how many stories would you be going up on?
Yeah, I mean, we're talking like, we're talking three to five stories. Again, we'll get to this later in our analysis, but we've assumed a, we've assumed a development cost here of $300,000 per hotel room that's constructed. And when you start, you know, if you go to high-rise construction or you do something complicated, like a big parking garage or something like that, you know, your cost estimates would go, would likely go well beyond $200,000 per room. And then, and basically, basically that cost would wind up coming out of what a hotel developer could pay for the site. So ideally, you want to keep the construction relatively simple and our programming assumptions here reflect that. So we can move on to the next slide. Okay, now here, you know, luckily here, our analysis with regard to hotel performance for the proposed hotel is fairly straightforward. You know, sometimes we go into markets and there just aren't a good set of competitive hotels in the area from which we can glean potential levels of performance. And here, I really feel like that's luckily not the case. We compiled a competitive set here, which includes four hotels in the area. You have the Hampton Inn Courtyard, the Hyatt House and the Residence Inn. You know, just, they're, I think they're all technically located in Cypress, but they're just across the border from, from, from Los Alamitos. And all of those hotels fall into this upscale select service hotel segment that we're envisioning for the proposed hotel here at the subject site. They have relatively similar room counts as well. You can see their, their room counts range from about 110 to 180 guest rooms. And, you know, it's, you know, I guess, we'll get into this in a bit more depth than some of the other slides. But you're kind of overall, you know, I mean, I think overall, we would see the proposed hotel, of course, outperforming these existing hotels in large part because, you know, these hotels were built between the late 1980s and the mid 2000s. So for the most part, you know, with the exception, really with the exception of the Hampton Inn, you're talking about hotels, you know, that are 15 to 20 or more years old. You know, so we, we would, we would see a new hotel performing better than them. That being said, I would note that we have two hotels in the extended stay segment included in our competitive set, the Hyatt House and the Residence Inn. So those hotels cater a bit more to hotel guests who are staying for longer periods of time. And those products offer larger room sizes. And so they're, they're, the rates that those hotels get kind of do reflect that larger, larger size. So that will limit the proposed hotel's advantage to some extent, as I wouldn't envision it being a extended stay hotel. We can move on to the next slide. On this table here, we've shown the performance of those four competitive hotels that I just summarized. So you can see that they do, they do annual occupancies of about 87% according to the latest data that we have available. And that's, that's very strong. That's, that's very strong. You rarely, you pretty rarely see hotel occupancies above 90%. Anything, anything above 80% quite frankly, quite frankly, is very strong. And I think at this level, 87% is exceptionally strong. So there's, that reflects a very high level of demand for hotel product in the market. And especially considering that we only see one competitive hotel entering the market over the next couple of years. We really think that the market can easily absorb another hotel in, in the area. The second key measure of hotel performance that we look at in addition to occupancy is, is the average daily rate. That's basically, you know, what, on average, what are guests paying per night to stay at those four competitive hotels? And, you know, in 2016, they, those hotels had an average rate of about $140 a night. And then, you know, when we, when we ran these numbers towards the end of 2017, growth in 2017 was, was tracking at about 6.5% above 2016. So it looks like the competitive set ended the year in 2017 at something probably in the $145 to $150 range. And again, for a select service product, this is a really strong level of rate performance. We can move on to the next slide. We can, yeah, we'll come back to that perhaps. Now here, this slide is really sort of the meat of our analysis. So again, please stop me if you have any questions. But what we've done in this table here is we've taken the historical performance of those four competitive hotels that I just discussed. And we've projected their performance in, into the future. So remember, I just, you know, noted that the competitive set had an occupancy of about 87% most recently. So with the opening of the Fairfield Inn, we do see occupancy in the market declining slightly as that new supply is absorbed. But within a couple of years, we would see that new supply being fully absorbed in the market. And, you know, so by the time we get into the early 2020s, we would see occupancy levels in the market back at where they are today. So at about that like 86 to 87% mark. In terms of rate performance, we've seen really strong rate growth amongst those four competitive hotels over the last number of years. Most recently in 2017, they were tracking at 6.5% growth. Again, you know, in the nation, in the US, average rate growth amongst all hotels was more like 3%. So the market is definitely outperforming here. You know, we see rate growth is, you know, remaining pretty strong. You know, we forecasted 4%, which is, you know, moderately above the inflationary rate for the next couple of years. And then thereafter, we've assumed a pretty, you know, standard inflationary rate growth projection in the market. So that's how we got to our competitive, to our projections for the competitive hotels. And then the second step in our process is to say, well, okay, you know, we've projected the performance of the competitive hotels based upon their historic performance and our future outlook for the market. Now how do we see a new hotel at this site performing in comparison to those competitive hotels? From an occupancy perspective, you know, we, we would see the proposed hotel performing right in line with those hotels. We don't really see any reason why occupancy should be higher or lower in this particular location. You know, you're closer to the highway, which is definitely, definitely a plus, you know. But, but further down the street, you know, I think that you do have a higher concentration of corporations near some of those competitive hotels. So I, you know, from a location perspective, I think, you know, I think comparatively, those two factors balance each other out. We see occupancy in line with the market. From a rate perspective, we would see the new hotel garnering a rate premium of about 5% compared to the competitive hotels upon its stabilization and its third year of operations. You know, we might have gone a little, there could be some upside there. You know, sometimes for a new hotel development, we'll project a rate premium of 10%, you know, just to sort of capture the higher level of desirability for, you know, a brand-new product. But we tempered that expectation a tad in this case because the competitive set did have some extended stay hotels with those larger room products. So, you know, we don't see the rate premium versus those, the Residence Inn and the Hyatt House with those larger room products potentially being, you know, being quite as high. So that's how we got to our, our occupancy and rate projections, which had, in the stabilized year, which we would see occurring in 2022, we have occupancy at 87% and rate at $170 for the proposed hotel. Which is again, very strong for a select service hotel. You know, here, I mean, I can go into more detail if you'd like. I know we have a lot of ground to cover here today, so maybe I'll, I'll just kind of talk at a high level here. You know, for select service hotels, the majority of your revenue is being driven by your room rate and occupancy levels. So those occupancy and ADR projections that I just detailed are driving about 92% of the revenue that we.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So if I'm a developer, I love this stuff because it tells me how feasible this is. But from the city's perspective, we get a certain amount, which looks to be about 3.5 million. million.
Yeah.
We get one in some percentage of property tax and, and some TOT or hotel occupancy tax of anywhere between 100 to 300,000 a year. That, that's really the business case for us, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And probably the most interesting thing, just to be sensitive, and if anybody in the council wants to keep going through this, I definitely will. But the index or the, the, the percentage, the, in IRR, that the developer makes a decision whether they want to do this or not, drives their feasibility of how much they want to pay us for this land. Your ratio that was in the report that said $25,000 a key times 150 gets to 3.5 million. And so if we just compare this to all other options, it's, we can sell it outright for an amount, we can get 3.5 for a hotel, or we can now start to place this on the table as something to compare to, to renovate and use this property here. Is, is there more from the city's perspective? Because I, I might take away at this point, guys, is, looks like a feasible deal. Is there anything else that, from the city's perspective, that you guys want to see or go into more detail on this? Because I'm trying to get all the pieces on the table so that we can start going through this, and I, I know we all read this through to prepare for here.
I think, I think this confirmed the answer that we probably already knew, that hotels do well for cities. There's a steady stream of revenue. Okay, so we've got this, now what? I mean, I'm more interested in, we have this report, we have our civic center thing, how do we mingle the two together to come out with the city's business case of moving forward?
Yeah. And the message to the audience too, I see a lot of people here, to be respectful to the audience, anybody interested to talk, I wanted to set the table so it would be an informed discussion versus a fantasy discussion of how cool it would be until we really have heard all this. So we'll talk some more in just a few minutes. But to the council, I will go to whatever direction you want. Do you want to continue to go through this? Do we want to get to the conclusion and move on to the best use or the modification costs of the existing? It's up to you guys.
Yeah, let's move on. I mean, the, we all agree that it's feasible. I think that was the purpose really of what it comes down to.
Okay. From the hotel perspective, and by the way, great report, honestly, a great read. Anything you want to add to this, just as you're, I mean, I'm not trying to cut you short, but I want to be sensitive to everybody's time.
Of course, of course. No, I mean, the only thing I would, I mean, I think, you know, you kind of, you know, summarize the conclusion there very well. I mean, you know, just, I would say, I mean, I think you probably got a sense as I was going through that, all of these, you know, we have a lot of support for all of these assumptions. There's a lot of, there's a lot of similarly positioned hotels in the market to which we could turn to. So none of these projections in here, you know, I don't think any hotel developer would regard them as crazy or hard to substantiate. You know, so I, I think that our hotel cash flow projections, you know, are very well, well-supported, and you would find hotel developer interest there. When we get to that $3.8 million residual land estimate there, you know, so how-
Go up to that slide, because that to me was the most meaningful.
Maybe I will, I'll spend a-
Just a minute there, because it's that one, right? Oh, no, it's, no, keep going.
You can go up, yeah, I mean, go, keep, keep going up, not down. Go to page, what was it, 30, the other direction, page 30.
It's down at the bottom.
Yeah. I can go to, okay, yeah, so-
Keep going.
Yeah, I think this is probably the best place to stop.
Yeah.
So basically, how did we get to this $3.8 million?
Steve, can you pull that up to bigger so everybody can see?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We said, okay.
So we landed in the middle where the red is, and that's because the whole thing hinges that the developer comes in and wants to get a certain discounted rate for the total program, so you got to understand all the pieces. But, you know, I mean, for us, just to be selfish, it's a $3.8 million play as compared to everything else for one-time money.
Mm-hmm.
But, and then the percentage, the thing I couldn't get from this was the 11% versus, you know, if we, if the price stays the same, all those other factors are out of our control, a development cost and all that. So it seemed like a little bit, I wasn't sure how the discount rate directly correlated with the amount.
Yeah, so, I mean, typically when a hotel developer approaches a, a new project, right? So they have, they've estimated what their development cost will be. We've assumed that it's $200,000 per room. And then, you know, they projected out what the hotel operating cash flows will be, and, you know, that was basically the point of, you know, the first 30 slides in this deck. And what a hotel developer wants to know is, okay, well, if I have to spend $200,000 per room to build this hotel, basically what we're asking ourselves here is, as a hotel developer, how much additionally can I afford to pay for the land and still meet my return objectives, right? And every developer, you know, different developers, quite frankly, have different return objectives. So one, you know, one hotel developer might have a really low cost of capital or, you know, a really high tolerance for risk, and maybe they're happy with a 10% cash-on-cash return. But another developer, you know, might, you know, have a lower tolerance for risk and a lower, and a higher cost of capital or what have you, and they may want a 12 or 13% cash-on-cash return. So, you know, you don't, so that's, that's why in this table, we've exhibited a range here. We would see, from our experience in the market, 11% would be a good median return expectation for a hotel developer in this market. These returns are dependent upon, you know, they're dependent upon the developer and their own cost of capital, but they're also dependent upon the market in which the proposed hotel is located, right? So being, being in the Los Angeles Long Beach metropolitan area, you know, where there's a lot of corporate demand, you have, you know, strong airport accessibility, you have the second largest economy in the nation, you know, there you'll have a lot of interest and, and someone might be happy with an 11% return. If we were talking about, you know, a rural market in the middle of the Midwest where the economy is faltering, that return expectation wouldn't be 11%. It would be 14% or something higher. By extension, if we were talking about a development site, you know, right, you know, in the middle of Midtown Manhattan, for example, you might see, you might see a return expectation, you know, lower, it could be 9%. You know, but for, for this market in this location, we think 11% is a good median estimate. But I do have to caution that that's, you know, that's, that's our median expectation, right? You could, you could go to market and, you know, and, and it could, you know, you could get 4.5 million, or you could, or, or you could get less, it could be 3.1. And it is unfortunately, that estimate is unfortunately very sensitive. So that, that 3.8 million, it could, it could go up significantly, it could go down significantly. It's hard to tell until you actually go to market.
So the placeholder to put the cap on this, then, for us to look at is, 3.8 would be a placeholder, 100 to 300,000 dollars a total TOT, that'd be annual revenue to the city, and 1.25% of 30 million. When you talk about cost per key and land value, you had said before that it's a $30 million investment and that it was a 300,000 dollar key cost per hotel room. I think it was in your analysis. So I'm just trying to get the, the data points, so, just so we can move on, this, we have one-time money of about four, and about $600,000 of annual tax revenue. Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm, I think that's where we're locked in with that. Any other questions on the hotel?
If I could.
Sure.
The, just to recap, you're talking of one acre of land for the hotel?
Three. No, you would probably need, you would need more than one acre. Yeah, I mean, I don't think you would necessar, I think you would need, for a hotel of this size, you'd probably need about two acres. I don't know that you'd need the full 3.1 that you'd need, yeah, you'd need more than one acre.
The one that'll be under construction in a couple of months is 1.8.
Yeah.
And that's 188 rooms?
108.
108, I'm sorry.
And the, and my alternative, three.
The fiscalization of this land and building of new facilities, the new facilities would be on one acre and the hotel site, the fiscalization on the two acres.
Two acres, yes. So we're using the two acre in our analysis.
Okay. So you're talking 1.9 per acre, 1.9 million per acre, based on 3, the 3.8, that's where it comes from? Because eventually, whoever buys a land is not going to care what their rate of return is, they're going to care what the market value of the land is. You're not, you're not, just because they can get a higher residual value, they're not going to pay more than the value of the land. That's correct assumption?
Well, they're not going, let's see, I mean, they're not-
There's comps.
The residual land value is based upon that return expectation. So they can't pay more than 3.8 mil, so in this, according to this analysis, they can't pay 3.8 million and still, you know, achieve their desired level of return. Now, I mean, if they could buy another site, if they could buy another site for, for less than that, that's comparable, then yet, then, then yet, they would, right?
So just under 2 million an acre though, for this land, did we do anything regarding comps as to?
We've been, we've been steady with that number for a while. We used that number with Lincoln over the last two years, it's about 2 million.
Is that, is that in line with what Olson paid for the Cottonwood Church?
Residential, they probably paid a little bit more, but I wouldn't have access to that information unless we're close.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Proton.
Thank you. So on the 3.8, again, I think you'd mentioned Troy, it's one-time money, correct? I mean, it-
Yeah, and you could structure it in any way.
So, so, okay, so I'm going to go there. So what about the total opposite, that we retain the land and lease that to a developer? Does that happen? And what kind of-
That definitely happens.
And what kind of, what kind of revenue stream will we see in that? It's a question, right? And I'm lucky for the answer, but that's, it is possible then, we can retain the asset in terms of land.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. We're working on a project actually right now at California State University, Northridge, and, you know, a lot of, you know, some public entities are not, you know, by law allowed to sell the land, so they'll frequently lease any excess land that they have to developers. And, and developers will, you know, that definitely happens.
And there'd be just a annual revenue stream from that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we could, we could estimate what that would be. It could basically be whatever lease payments sort of have a net present value of that 3.8 million. But you could structure it as a lease if you wanted to retain ownership.
Okay. The range would be like from 7 to 9%. And a 9% you have a portion front, that's what we see, 8 to 7. I'm thinking those ranges on properties.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Turco, do you have any questions, or are we good? So if we're good there, we're going to go ahead and on to the last component of this.
Ricardo?
Good evening, my name is Ricardo Flores, and I'm a senior vice president of construction at JLL. I work for the PDS Group, which is the Property Development Services. And one of the functions of our group is to perform property condition assessments. Generally, these services are done for lenders as part of risk management, so that lenders can know the type of risk they're going, when they lend money on a building. So this is more or less a hybrid of that. Because what we generally do in a property condition assessment is look at all the systems in the building, determine their age, determine when they need replacement, determine deficiencies that could detract from the value of the building, and offer solutions or a cost to bring that building back to, to where it should be. This building was built in the late 70s, I believe, if I remember. It's almost 40 years old. It's had very little maintenance, based on what we observed. You can see that the, most of the air conditioning systems are close to 40 years old. The generator is base, is, does not appear to work very well, if anything. The roofing systems have reached their useful service life and they need to be replaced. And generally, what we did in our report is tabulate all those costs based on a 10-year term, what would need to be performed at what point within that 10-year term. And that's how we came up with our assessment. Now, I'll be glad to go, you know, item by item as you wish, but basically, it's, you know, this is the report that we prepared. We looked at all the systems, structures, exterior, roof, life safety, electrical plumbing, air conditioning, and took a look at each of the systems. One of the items that we observed that, for this building, not necessarily for this, for the campus, there are several rooms, for example, over at the centers you have on the north end, those are assembly areas without fire sprinklers, without any visible means of emergency lighting in case of blackouts and things like that. So we had to determine all that to put in a fire alarm system for the building, for example, and to improve that, the usability of that building. You know, buildings like the television studios has been really let go. You know, the roofing is torn apart, all the water is seeping through, you can see all the moisture, the paint popping up. And, you know, that probably would be the, the worst-case scenario for this, for this facility. And one thing that we did not look at, but we were provided with an American with a Disability Act assessment. And that was just with the corrections that would be required to bring this property to ADA, to current ADA standards, you know, we're talking about a million and a half dollars. And then the rest of that would be, you know, another portion of about one and a half million dollars to bring the building, you know, and, and systems back to usability. And that's where we came up with our, our cost of about three, three and a half million dollars over the next 10 years.
By the way, not trying to cut these short, so feel free, you have a lot of information that was in your staff report.
Correct.
If there's anything specifically, a table, I also want to make sure the community can see kind of the overall picture, because the, kind of the bottom line in this, like you said, was three to four million dollars of investment. But do you have any chart in here that you would want to show the folks that are in the audience that kind of gives a breakdown of the investment?
Well, we have a capital expenditure chart, which if you go further into the report, would be page 27 of our report. Here, what we did is that we took the different systems, the different components of the property, and determined what the deficiency was, or what the need was to, to replace a certain system. And we came up, we have a 10-year chart starting with the year 2018, and determined what items were items that we felt were immediate needs and what items could be phased out over the next 10 years. As you can see, you know, we start with, for example, the parking lot. Parking lot has, has not been maintained in a while, there's a lot of alligator and some ruts in there. There needs to be some repairs done on the pavement, and we took out the surface area, and we came out with a, for example, $6,900 cost for that. Okay, one was the southwestern end, and the other went for the asphalt pavement at the maintenance yard. We also have the northeastern parking lot. We also have damaged sidewalks and pathways that need to be replaced, those could be tripping hazards. So those you consider an immediate cost. For example, on the exterior, we were talking about that TV station building, there is considerable amount of exterior repair that needs to be done. The roof overhangs are, are rotted already, you know, the siding is also rotted, you have doors. So that is based, our estimation for repairs of those elements, $16,000 on the immediate term. We have, and then you have to paint these, the walls. So then we go to the, you know, patching of cement plaster at the, at the plaster buildings, which are the youth center and the, I don't remember, the community center building. Those require exterior repairs as well. And also, they need to be painted, even though it might not be, and that needs to be done immediately, we have to factor in within the 10 years. The police station building also has many of the exterior, it has those breezeways overhangs that are unprotected, and they've, there's dry rot on those elements, and they need to be replaced as well. And we factored in a cost to replace those. And we factored in a cost to replace those. The carport building, which is right behind us, you know, it's a little bit questionable whether it was, you know, in, you know, this is a city, so I don't know if you're under the same standards as, as you would be with a homeowner, that, as a homeowner would be repairing their, building a building, but that seems to be a building that was, was installed over a fence that happened to be there. But, uh, there is, uh, also damage to the wood siding, to the wood eaves, and also we, we factored costs to repair those in the immediate term, and it's spread out over 10 years as well. If you can go to the next page. Roofing, we're talking about the roof tiles, the replacement of the tile at the, at these three buildings, the, uh, at, this is the council building, city hall, and the police station, oh, plus the two, uh, freestanding buildings at the north end, the youth center and the community center. Those buildings, the roofing were estimating, you know, phasing the repair out in the next two or three years, replacement of those. And sometimes, when you remove the roof, you also have to factor in costs like, uh, dry rot that you might find on the underlying substrate. And then we have, there are flat roofs over the community building and the, and the teen center where the, or the youth center, where the air conditioning's on, that roof, it needs to be replaced as well. Those are pretty old. And in addition, you know, you, now you have to maintain them as well. And we factored in costs for maintenance of those buildings, those roofs. Hmm, let's see, roof membrane at this TV station building, which I mentioned earlier, was really torn up, and it has a screen on top that the wind has just torn apart as well. And it's been left that way for several years, so that's allowed that building to deteriorate. We have the cost to replace those as well. And then if you go to the next page, you have the, the carport building, which is right behind us, that is a flat roof, and that also needs to be repaired or replaced, we're factoring in one year. Hmm, let's see, but for the meantime, while, uh, prior, since we're factoring in replacing those roofs in the next few years, you need to have some immediate service to, to look for leaks and prevent those leaks at this point, which will deteriorate the building, the interior of the building. So we factored in a cost for immediate repairs for the roofs. And then on the interior, the TV station, as I mentioned, is, is in bad shape inside, and that needs to have some major repairs if you want to reestablish that building, the use of that building. The next category would be air conditioning, and here we're talking about replacing most of the mechanical systems on the roof, some within the two, three, or four years down the line. Uh, yeah, electrical, light fixtures, what we're, uh, you know, some of the light fixtures need to be, uh, needed to replace those with energies, energy-type fixtures that would save, save energy, and those are the costs that we've estimated, phasing our lighting replacement over the next, uh, four year, five years. We have plumbing, you have water heaters that need replacement. You have showers, faucets, and water closet, urinals, also replace those fixtures to bring those up to current energy standards, water-saving features. We have, then we reach the fire life safety system, we recommended that consultant be hired to, to design a fire alarm system for the property, and install a fire, a fire alarm system with, with bells, pull stations, smoke detectors, et cetera. And that would be an immediate cost, since it's a life safety feature. The emergency generator barely serves the police station, and you, it, it needs to be enhanced to be able to provide more services to an essential facility such as a police station, because there's very, I believe that the captain told us that they have to go to another city in case of a, of a black, blackout to retrieve their systems. And you need to have all that self-contained. And generally, it's the emergency lighting, which we determine that, in case of a blackout at specific exits, you should have lighting systems that would turn on, you know, via that battery to assist people in leaving, leaving the building. And then when you come up to the end, we have a cost, and then the items that are established over the 10-year term, we have to throw in a 3% inflation factor per year, which increases the cost. And that's how we came up with the approximately $1.4 million of, uh, phase costs over the next 10 years, plus $500,000 in immediate costs. And any item that you want to go over specifically, I'll be happy to.
Okay, good deal. So the, the summary of this would be about 3.5 million dollars of total costs and an immediate first year need, immediate costs of about?
Half million dollars.
500,000. Okay. Um, I'm going to pull it back, see if there's any questions, then I'm going to open it up to the public on all three components of this.
Sure.
But anybody have any questions?
Um, the list of expenditures to get the buildings?
Yes.
Those are prioritized based on immediate need?
Yes.
Okay, so, no, and I noticed, and I, I don't think any, but he disagrees, that the studio needs a whole bunch of work.
Right.
But I think we also need to decide as a council, with technology, and now an editing bay is now this, do we need to dedicate an entire building to a TV studio? Or as we move forward, is it now becoming something smaller, and those immediate needs now get shifted to something else, like the community center that serves a bigger audience? I think that's a discussion that we need to have about future uses of our existing buildings, rather than just fixing the roof because it's a really bad roof. Are we going to use it for that purpose? I, I, I think that's a question we really need to have.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sure.
Yeah, probably my last comment is, you know, if you have a house and you want to do a fix-up on it, you make a choice of whether you're just trying to do deferred maintenance, or you're doing a remodel.
Correct.
And I think this is, seems like the maintenance version, not the remodel, because the remodel, you do the kitchen nicer.
It's a different thing, yes.
You get, you know, you decide you're going to do whatever you're going to do, and it's really much nicer than when you started. This just meets minimum requirements of, kind of clearing up. Okay. There's no other questions, uh, at this point. We're going to take a five-minute break, and then we're going to open, or 10-minute, and we'll open it up at 6:30, and we'll have public comment, and so we'll go from there. Thank you.
Sean Underwood just hit our heart.
Yeah, now you're, you're. What I was going to do was, uh, open it up for a public comment, to see if there's anybody in the audience after hearing the great staff report. And again, I want to just want to reiterate, really good work, um, you know, especially, you know, we get this stuff a week in advance, some of it we had seen previously, so I, I think just directionally, the good, good work, so we were able to kind of get to, because what I'm hoping tonight is we'll get to some decisions and not more studies, so, anyway. With that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to address the council with the issue that we're talking about tonight specifically, or anything under our jurisdiction, please feel free to jump in. And I don't know where there's an open mic. Would that mic work up there? Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, anybody, please?
You always wanted to do this.
I'll be filled on you. Hey, can I ask city staff, where should the person be so they can, their question can be heard and?
I'm going to just, podium or else? I'll be over here, yeah. Doug, is it? Anyone?
I guess we could put the mic back up here, yeah?
Good evening, everybody. Pete Carvahal, resident of Los Alameda since about 2001, live in the Rossborough Highlands. Again, I want to commend everybody, great report. I think, I, I didn't find anything on it that was surprising to me, but I liked the way that it was compiled all in one easy format. And I know I'll be spending a lot more time with the PowerPoint and taking a look at it, and, uh, a little more detail into some of the numbers, but I think it was a great summary. I want to thank you all for coming here and putting it together. Uh, the, the one point I wanted to make was, I heard reference to, um, the possibility of maybe developing or, or working or moving Parks and Rec over to Little Cottonwood, and that would be, you know, that's kind of in my purview of, of the role I've played in the city on the Parks and Rec Commission, and also with the youth sports leagues. The amount of open space that we have available for parks and for children to play in is maxed out, is tapped out. We're, we're running at a minimum of what we should have for the residents in our community. And whether or not somebody on here feels that that area is underutilized or not utilized, we should look at how we can improve on that open space to utilize it better than building something on that space. Specifically, Little Cottonwood, as it, it is very close to Apartment Row, and an area where children don't have any yards to play in. I mean, if it would be something else if it was in the Highlands, and I could guarantee you that the Highlands would be up in arms if they built anything on Orville Lewis. The, for the people that live in Apartment Row, every inch of space on that park should stay open, and should not have a building put on it. Back in the past, when we talked about maybe flattening the field at, at Little Cottonwood so that we could rent it out to sports groups, I, the commission at the time, and I won't speak for the commission today, but the commission at the time decided to let it rolling, because there was, that was the one place that people could go to that wasn't taken up by sports teams all year round. All the rest of our field space, all the rest of our school space is used all the time. So I want to emphasize, if you're going to build something or put something out there temporarily while construction is going on, that's one thing, but that, any open space, any park space, any field space, should stay that at this point. So that's just my opinion.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Any other comments? Couldn't resist, could you, Dean? I was trying to go to you earlier, thanks for the input.
You, you kind of talked me into it. My name is Dean Gross, former council member, candidate in 2018. Had, had to do that in order just to interview Pete's candidate in 2018, too. You know, we're, we're between a rock and a hard place, and you guys have got a tough decision, because, um, the concept of putting new roofs on a house that was built 50-plus years ago, and air conditioners, and the siding doesn't look good, and this doesn't look good, and there's dry rot here and dry rot there, I don't know that you can do it. If I owned it, I would have to think real hard about just doing maintenance to the building, which is kind of what's been being done all along. And in reality, um, the question of whether you tear all of this down and rebuild here versus finding some other spot and splitting the city up into different areas, at 1.13 locations were identified by staff as possible city hall spots. I think a lot of that needs to be looked at in the process. I really question whether this facility, or these facilities here are worth fixing up.
Excuse me.
It's one of those things that, it, it's a tough decision to make in that process. They've referenced the TV studio. That building used to be the finance building, and they moved out of there when the two trailers were put in. Heard nothing about the trailers in their discussion in terms of the quality of what's happening there. We know we get skunks and vermin underneath it. But that studio was condemned by the building department more than 10 years ago, and was told to be torn down then. Then the pressure from the LATV came in, and they agreed to help, you know, do what they could to keep it together. And baling wire and duct tape, you know, only works for so long. You've got a real challenge on your hands, and I don't envy you the process of trying to figure out what the best alternatives are. I worked hard trying to arrange facility, arrange land. That land, I think, is still available, although the public infant, the public interest says, no, we don't want to go there. But Seale Beach recently cut a deal with the Naval Weapons Station. Naval Weapons Station's going to move their fence back to allow the city to build a pool along Seale Beach Boulevard directly opposite the police station down there. So to tell me that it can't be done is, is something I find very hard to swallow. There are ways we can do this, and we just have to be assertive in that particular process. Good luck.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? Hi there.
Hello, Nick Zempelis, I own property in the city, I'm a developer, and, um, always excited to hear that, uh, developers could buy land, but, uh, in this case, I would recommend you go, you all look very carefully at, uh, at selling the la, the land here. You, you won't get an opportunity to, to buy it back or acquire other land, you can't make more land in the city. This, of course, is prime real estate, it's a great location. Yeah, the facilities are, are needing some work, but, uh, I would say look very hard at, at the, at the possibilities of either renovating, or doing major remodeling, or tearing down portions of the buildings, and maybe going a little, going in a little higher rise, uh, situations, you have enough parking and enough, uh, open space around it, maybe there's even room to add a little bit of, uh, green space, uh, on the, on the land. Uh, it's a, it's a great spot, don't sell it. I think the future city councils will be sorry that, uh, that we sold the land, so, can never get it back. So, thank you, and good luck.
So a question for you, because, uh, I've definitely, on all my time in the council, I've seen your name go through the planning commission a ton of times, so you definitely do a lot in the community. The, your view of sitting back and keeping the property and kind of going through, you've seen the study and some of their recommendations, anything that, I'd be interested in your perspective. I, off the cuff, you said, you know, keep it, possibly go up, I mean, more specifically, you're a developer and you look at this, this is not exactly what you develop, but it, uh, I'm just kind of interested in more specific.
Well, we develop residential and commercial property. We have a building that we kept that's across from the hospital over there. Like, like I said, you have a, you have a prime piece of property here, keeping the city whole, the, the city facilities whole, I think is a, would be a smart move. And having the three acres here, we're kind of spread out here, we have a single-story building here, we have a single-story building with the trailers. If we went up a little bit, maybe three or four stories, like, uh, the Long Beach City Hall, all their building and planning is in a building, if, I think it's six or seven or eight stories, we don't need that much, we're a smaller city. But doing something like that consolidates the, uh, the office space into a smaller footprint, allows room for the parking around, not having to build a parking structure, and as I said, maybe some green space, maybe even something that's, uh, that courtyard or some other areas that are, that are available. I mean, it goes against myself as a developer, yeah, I'd say, no. Get rid of it, let me buy it.
That's what I was waiting to hear, actually. Yeah, you let me down there, but, yeah.
But in reality, um, you know, we, we tried to do something next door here, the Village 605 was a spectacular project, and the staff did a great job, um, working with developers and had a beautiful thing, and we got pushback from, from the public, and that kind of put a stop to it. Um, if, if you were to sell the land to a hotel developer, you could probably get the same pushback. So what's the developer going to do? He's probably going to want a contingency and say, I'm not, I'm not going to close escrow unless I can know I can develop it. And the city's gone down that path then, so, a lot of moving parts there. Uh, even the, I don't know if, is the spring, is the suite, is the hotel down the street going to go? It is, okay, good. Yeah, so.
Cool. Well, we appreciate it.
Happy to sit down anytime and shoot the breeze and figure out more stuff, but.
Yeah. No, I, we really appreciate you coming down.
I spent about an hour reading through the presentation, I thought, I got wind of it a few days ago, and started looking at it, so, I wanted to come and see what this is all about, so.
Great, thank you.
So anytime.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments? Yeah, step on up.
Dean Hill, resident of Los Alamos, I'm a, I am a Parks and Rec Commissioner. Just kind of a few brief comments, I, I support also what the previous speaker said, I kind of be, probably wish the city hadn't have sold the land in the future, as he said, there's not much space available. But I, to myself, I was thinking, maybe the, if there's some swaps somewhere in the city that made sense, and one swap that came to my mind was the school district in Bloomfield, I don't know, swap possibly there, in that this property is adjacent to Oak, and it gives them options, and, and the city hall and administration could be off of a main street, and I'm sure at first glance, probably think it couldn't be done, but, I don't know, they're comparable sizes, and, just for consideration, if you hadn't already looked at that.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council, and, so, we want to start with you.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm really interested in trying to keep city hall together, I think there's a service synergy, you know, we all work really close together because of our You know, we all work really close together because of our size, so to kind of segment us. I did bring up the thing about Park and Rec because we were trying to figure out how to put different entities in different places, and that made the most sense. I'm not into giving up green space by any means, but I also want to make sure that we maximize our use. And if there's a part of Cottonwood that isn't maximized, then I'll throw it back in the Parks and Recs to figure out something to make sure that that green space gets utilized and not just a back corner. You know, I'd love to be able to see where we can get a financial model to do a major remodel here. You know, as I mentioned earlier, not eliminate LATV, but condense LATV to keep up with its technology. Now, we have a building that either we could get rid of because it needs tremendous amount of work, and does that make more sense to make that maybe some open space? Does it make sense to look at moving the yard to a warehouse area so now we have some more space and make this more of a community complex type thing and keeping everybody together going up, to some extent for administration over where Oak is? You know, and you're going to hear me say this over and over again, we need a senior center, and I want it before I have to use it. I mean, we take care of our families, we take care of our kids. You know, we try to take care of our seniors with our limited facilities, but while we're talking about this, throw that in as a need. We need something like that here, and as we're kind of redesigning this area, if that's how we decide to go, let's throw that in there, you know, as we, if we decide to go up, and what can we do with the bottom floors and things like that. But I am absolutely for keeping us here. I agree with the speakers that once you sell it, you're never going to get it back. And let's see what we can do to keep the synergy in the same space.
Great, thank you. Anybody like to go next, before we just go down the line? Okay, Councilmember Chirco.
So I'm looking at all the options here, and, you know, I'm looking at the price tags of these options, too, and, you know, I'd love to rebuild all the facilities on this site. That would be great, but the cost is phenomenal. And, you know, we've got pension obligations and pension costs that are going to be rising over the next few years. I don't see how we take on this additional cost. If the, you know, if we're limiting ourselves to these options, take on that additional cost and deal with our pension obligations at the same times and be financially responsible. Options two and three, in terms of, you know, selling part of the land and then leasing or purchasing elsewhere, I just don't see that as an option right now, given that there's no, there's nowhere to go. There's nothing that would work for us lease-wise, and as I understand it, you know, not any viable option for purchasing either. So, you know, I'd be interested in staying here and rehabbing what we have, perhaps. You know, I don't find these buildings as offensive as some people do. They certainly need a lot of work, but, but, you know, maybe we consider fixing some of them up and doing total remodels of some of the buildings, but.
Okay. Councilmember Murphy.
All right. As to go along with what Mark was saying, I think there's a certain amount of repairs we're just going to have to do. And they're not going to wait however long it would take to get the plans. Brett, what would be the shortest we could erect a new building? Four years?
That's what I was talking about with Mike on the break. I mean, even if we go forward with an option of trying to come up with creative ways to rebuild new facilities, we still have the $500,000 in immediate needs plus some other needs, too. But three, four, five years, I mean, construction, logical construction time, so we would still have to be here or temporarily on another facility like Little Cottonwood Park while that construction is taking place. So it's realistic for four to five years?
Another question. I don't really, I'm not a leasing fan, but have we talked to the people next door about what the cost would be over there?
Not yet about the cost, but we had talked about the potential to have some facility over there, because they're going to have, they're going to have office buildings, and, you know, they're going to have vacant space and need for tenants. And so can we move a portion over there and be a tenant? That, I think, is a possibility to explore. I think it makes it, and the discussion came up about the site next door and looking at what can be done with that, and I think if we're a tenant and if that one acre site is a part of it, the whole campus again becomes attractive. You know, it's a 13-acre. If you take all of it, then it's back to a 13-acre site.
Because I'm thinking that perhaps if we're in early enough, we're in a little more build-to-suit type position where even the requirements of the police department could be taken into effect somewhere. They do have a lot of parking over there, especially combined with what we have here.
Police may be, because it's a lot more specialized, it may be more difficult for us to be a tenant over there, but administration, you know, that type of a function, we, I think we could be over there.
Administration and council chamber easily. I mean, that's just tenant improvements that Lincoln can do to get us to sign one. Police, that's appealable to them, and that's where you start out with that. Police gets a little more specialized, and you try to find a new home for them and fit them on, whether it's where the cable television building is, or you try to find a new spot for them, and then you focus on that. It's a one step at a time, almost. Once you can check one box off, you can go to the next box. Okay, we've got administration covered, plans covered, city council chamber covered, then we move one of these, or who we move these into a permanent building and satisfy the senior need, satisfy the recreation need. We may have some synergies on one campus where not all the properties used. There's a lot of acreage right where the cable TV and offices. You can do a nice footprint right there if it was two stories. Remember, we don't own the parking lot behind the Chamber of Commerce, so it doesn't include that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. So, you know, looking at kind of just the footprint where we have, and certainly, I think the Civic Center complex with the police portion of it, and then the office complex here, which is a temporary structure with a limited life, right? What's the lifespan of that? 20 years, 30 years, 50 years?
I wouldn't say more than 30. And at that point, it's deteriorating.
And it's about how old right now? 15?
It's already 2006. Yeah, it's already 12 years old.
So you get another, so something's going to have to happen there, just, you know, it's going to be, it's not meant to be a permanent structure. So how do we monetize what we have? I like the idea of leasing the land to maybe somebody to have a revenue stream. And then when you look at the youth center, the Parks and Rec Center, that's old and that needs some kind of update as well. So there is an opportunity, I think, to build the two-story, multi-story building there with sufficient parking as the Civic Center, have a revenue stream from this footprint here, and we'd have to kind of look at those numbers and see where we are. And one of the things, I know some of the members of the public had spoke about, or approached me about public-private partnership in terms of financing, so we haven't even explored that part of it, which, you shake your head, Stephen, there may be some downsides to it, right?
No, no, I'm shaking my head because you're right. We have not.
So there are options, and then when you look at our credit rating, our ability to borrow money, it really comes down to, do we have enough revenues in the out years to satisfy the kind of debt we might take on? So I think, you know, not to, again, councils of the future may look back at this kind of moment that if we're going to be bold and, again, make some solid decisions based on projections that we're getting from developers, economists, and kind of where we have to be, because if we stay the same way we are, I mean, we know we're going to have, but it's going to, we're going to pour money into this asset. So, you know, how do we monetize this? I think that's, and that was said, the previous councils had looked at, you know, different ways to use this. Unfortunately, next door, the Village 605 did not happen, but had that happened, then we might be having a way different discussion. And I think the other part is, I think we do need to talk to the sewer district and find out what can we partner with them to really turn this into a, again, a revenue stream even for them. So with that, back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Hey, a couple of things were brought up. I just want to put data on the table again. So one of the speakers talked about the reason why the project next door didn't follow all the way through Lincoln Properties. Just a clarification, definitely we had some adverse reaction from our neighbors, but the reality was that Amazon bought Whole Foods, and Whole Foods lost interest in developing that, and they were their anchor client. That deal, we worked with the developer for another year after that to try and find another retail. The reality is retail got soft, we couldn't find or assist that developer in finding the right space or the right person to move in, and that business case fell apart, and that's why it is where it is. You know, I think another data point would be, hey, you know, you never want to give up land if you've got it, right? But you got to look at it, I think, a little bit differently, is Los Alamos is locked in size-wise, and outside of maybe some of the developments going over by Sausalito and stuff, City Hall, in theory, shouldn't get a whole lot bigger and need a whole lot bigger footprint for the next 50 to 80 years, unless Roche Moore becomes part of Los Al, which I would think would probably happen in probably 30 years, somewhere down the line. But I do see synergies with that, but that's a fight for a different time. And, you know, at this point, then, I think you look at it and you say, hey, what do we do now? If you put all the pieces out there, and you look at the hotel as an option, the hotel with using the property, subdividing it up, using and totally doing a different type of a structure on the back acre to house about 30,000 square feet, potentially leasing business property if we needed to next door, and then lease the ground underneath the hotel if that's feasible. You know, think about the dilemma we had when we talked about with the base, and they said, hey, we'll give you consideration for a 50-year loan or a 50-year lease, and we thought, man, would we put $10 million of taxpayer money into a building that in 50 years we could be told to move out of? Well, if you're a developer, would you put, you know, a significant amount of money into a hotel, thinking, you know, the city can pull the lease out from under them at the very end at some point in the future? But if it makes us feel better that property is really important and that we always need to hold on to it, I personally don't care. I think that, you know, if you look at the business case in real time, one way or the other, we're going to spend $500,000 now and 1.5 million to modify something that really is not going to be any better functionally and cosmetically, barely any better, and it will meet minimum requirement. And, you know, and that's a decision. The pictures that were in the staff report of City Hall, quite frankly, are pretty embarrassing. You know, I mean, it really paints a bad picture of our ability. I think in, you know, Dean Gross is up here, 2006 we came on, we were talking about doing modifications, so we've kicked the can 12 more years and not done anything. No one's fault in this room, but definitely that's a decision we've all made together. I don't have an interest in doing another study to study something, to study it one more time. I really want to try to get to some sort of a decision of guidance tonight so that we can get to the next step. You know, I think that if you look at the business case and you forget the opportunity cost of having to modify this building and church it up into minimum, and you compare it to the hotel study, and you compare, and you combine the hotel with a retrofit or new building going up in the back, that business case, basically, to do the building in the back was about 3.4 million, and the hotel gives you 3.8 million if you believe the property comps. So just the two projects at the highest level are a break even. It's a timing issue, and how do you fund it? The other data point that's out there is what Councilmember Chirco talked about, and that's something I'm very focused on, is the pension obligation. So let's just put another number on the table for the, because we're also outside of here talking about bond, obligation bond funding to potentially cover our shortfall in pensions. And city manager, if you can, just put the number out just as a planning number so we can talk about that.
Well, if you, I mean, if you're talking about the two together, if you talk about bonds for this site on gaps that have been presented, the amortization cost, approximately $600,000 a year. So, and we have a, so if we go out with pension obligation bonds, we're going to have a debt service comparable, if not more than that, on an annual basis.
But what is the debt obligation amount total that you were trying, that we've been talking about?
The pension obligation is 18 million.
That's 18 million, and how much was that payment? And we have not had an agenda item on this. This is planning at staff level that I've looked over the shoulder. What was the approximate amount that, what would be the, basically, the annual payment that this obligation would if we did the debt financing?
I need to go back and look at that debt service. I think we were in the, we were in the 600 to 700,000 annually, but I need to fine-tune that.
So if we looked at the project, hotel and a redo on the back 40 back here, at the highest level, it's almost a break even on total dollars, and the hotel option generates about 600,000 more net income, which then has to be compared to the other costs. I'm just, you know, it seems like there is a way forward. Then the issue is philosophically, do you care whether you lease the property or sell it? And that's a philosophical thing that we don't need to, you know, to decide tonight, because, you know, we can come back and get those numbers, but.
I think, and I'm talking on the break again with Mike, if we're talking about next steps and if the council wants to go the direction of looking at options, and if we want to look at potential creative options of a public-private partnership, not knowing what the marketplace is, first thing is go out and ask the development community if there is interest. I mean, based on the analysis, we've got really good data, and we can get that data out onto the market and determine if there is interest in the development community. And if there's interest, then probably we do a request for qualifications and submit proposals. We get proposals, we narrow that down. We maybe, we have an ad hoc committee of the council if the council wanted to go that way, or staff can analyze that. We're going to need funding for some sort of a consultant to help the staff analyze the data, but request for qualifications and narrow that down and then go out and ask for proposals. So the development community can get very creative, but we need to know if there's interest. And that would be, you know, Mike was suggesting, that's something that JLL and others could help us as staff determine in the marketplace, is this a viable alternative? Is there interest? And it's very valuable land, and it's just a fantastic site, and we have great data on the hotel feasibility, and so I think we're very marketable. But Mike, do you want to?
Yeah, that would be like.
Can you get the mic, please?
And that could be a potential next step if you want to pursue that, is, you know, before, actually, a queue actually even goes out in the street if that's the decision, you would actually pre-market it, see the interest. You know, that's what we typically do before we actually, you know, once it becomes a city, we're kind of restricted to, you know, who we can contact and what we can say, but before like the official queue goes out, you know, our company can go do a pre-marketing, contact our list of developers. You probably have a list of people who are, you know, interested in this area, too. Talk to them, discuss it. And if it seems like there's enough interest, then you can actually put the queue out in the street and say, you know, we want a list of people who are qualified and not do a full proposal, because then you would have to do the studies, say you need 40, you know, to be a fair proposal. You have to tell them, we want 40,000 square feet. We want, you know, you have to set your performance standards, your boundaries, so what they're going to bid on. But you can also do a queue where you can say, help us come up with a concept to, your goal is to have the, this many space at the lowest cost possible or find this alternate space. Let them come up with a concept. I mean, that's, as a Q concept, but not actually a P, but if you can find two or three that seem interested, then you can take those to the P level where, hey, we know we have 36,000, so give us a run that, they can do the study, help you determine what you need to take to the next level.
Okay. And then when Councilmember Hasselbrink, when she talked through, like, she has priorities, senior centers, that's been her thing since she's gone on, definitely is really important to us. I would ask that the council, we probably don't focus on what stays or goes, but the bigger picture of get some direction, because the process will work itself out with staff's help and the community's help on what should be here. And so things that we can focus on is just directionally giving guidance. So it sounds like the steps, if we wanted to take an action, and I'm going to stop in a minute and get feedback, but it would seem like we would send a serious message to the market that we were interested in shopping this as a hotel site for a portion of this property that makes sense with the business case. Second action would be to contact the Roche Moore Community Services District next door, the sewer district, and very softly just ask, or, you know, very succinctly just ask what interests they have. We're not bullying them into this. We were interested in working with them, and that would go into our business case of how much space we would need to do. And then in the back, between what we would do in that building, potentially other area we need leasing, whether it be next door or not, to Councilmember Murphy's point, it would be very convenient to be next door. Then the business case is, does the revenue that's generated on this site as a hotel at $600,000 a year offset the lease costs that we would have somewhere? Then that would be the business case at the highest level before we get into the details. So it seems like that could be a way for action. That's all I'm thinking, so let me kind of bring it back and see what the interest of the rest of the council is. Councilmember Chirco, can I start with you? Councilmember Chirco, can I start with you?
I am interested in following through with those, that course of action and getting more information about a public-private partnership. And I had not considered the lease option next door.
Okay, thank you.
I think you summed it up pretty good to the mayor, so.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with you.
And I think with the sewer district, I mean, really having a serious conversation saying, here's what we're going to do. You can be part of this and expand the footprint and then in turn, you know, work with us about getting office space in new facilities here. But just really lay out, this is the footprint and we're going to, we need to do this with or without UTEC thing, but we want to give you the opportunity to be part of it.
And the message to the council, I think for all of us, was very strong by the one comment, which is, once we make a decision, we have to keep our conviction that this is the right way. The communities and the adjacent communities can have an opinion, but this is about Los Alamos. And once we start this, you know, I think we've been warned, we don't want to get a developer half in and then worried about us like getting soft on it. So if there's no other comments, City Manager and Steve from Development, is there anything else you need in the way of guidance? The way this is packaged tonight on the staff report is the receive and file and getting guidance. Anything you need in the way of an action to start this formally going out from the hotel perspective and the discussions? Or do you have enough in the way that we've talked about it?
Everything we do blind out today can be done internally by staff. You don't need any new contracts, any new expenditures. The next, sorry, the next steps can be carried by staff.
It may be future though.
And I think we've opened a door. I think tomorrow he's going to get some phone calls from some interested parties and we'll see where it goes from there.
Yeah, it's really positive. I appreciate all the feedback. I think this went really well. Appreciate the work that JLL did. We have, Wendy helped me and Chelsea's here tonight too, helped me summarize the, basically what the mayor Edgar brought up with the consensus of the council in terms of follow-up items and send message to the community that, you know, we are serious about going forward with that. Explore with Rossmore Sewer District, are they interested in participating in this as a partner in this entire project? But I'm sorry, if I can add to that Brett though, I'm sorry to interrupt, but not just engage with them, but can you ask, can we meet with their electeds and start forming ad hocks? And that'll come, add that to the agenda for the future meeting because I think it's important that we really engage with them at the decision, you know, policymaking level as well.
Yeah, okay. And then determine the business case. So there's, like Stephen said, we can at the staff level put that together. I'm sure JLL with the partner that we are, we don't need to expend any more yet at this point. But we can, from tapping into their expertise, help us put together information and then provide that back. It may be either another study session or information, agenda item, discussion item with the city council next.
What do you anticipate is our next council member status report or check-in? Would it be a month from now, two months?
A month or two months. I mean, we may be able, we just, there's other things going on. We may be able to do it in the next meeting or the meeting after that, bring back an informational report to the council.
Let's shoot for April and if it changes, just let us know in the weekly and we'll be accommodating. But, and I don't want to be too, I know there's a lot of other stuff going on, but if that seems feasible, I'm sorry, shall we?
No, this is really good. I mean, I guess it's a fork in the road and I think at this point, it's pretty unanimous in terms of the direction back to the staff and where we want to try to go as a city at this point. So it's very exciting. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? With that, is there any other business that we need to take care of at this, at this point?